Ladies and gentlemen, the county board of supervisors, regular meeting to order on Monday, March the 7th, 2016, general district courtroom, Edwin R. Shields, courthouse addition. We will have a roll call this morning.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Bostad?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Monday. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the highest of the heavens.
Thank you all. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all here. We appreciate your presence. Do we have any items to add to the agenda? And we have two items to remove. Item eight, and that has been requested to be taken off by Mr. Calhoun. And that item will be scheduled at a future board meeting. Item fifteen, that item was acknowledged by Mr. Hagman will be taken off after action as already been taken. So I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those two items being taken off.
Should move, Mr. Chairman.
The motion by Mr. Blackstock and second by Mr. Hagman. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. And Mr. Monday. We're down to the hearing of citizens. And before we go to our sign up list, I want to recognize a few people. We have with us, where's Ms. Bowden? There she is. We have Ms. Brenda Bowman with us here this evening. Ms. Bowman, a former supervisor of the Chatham Blair's District and the chair of the Board of Supervisors for the year 2015. Ms. Bowman, we thank you very much. Seeing you out there, we haven't seen you. I haven't seen you from this point to there, but thank you for being with us.
This does look very weird.
That it does. We also have, let's see. We have code pack three sixty-two, Redwood Church with us this evening. We have, when I call your name, would you all just stand so that everybody can see you? We have Mr. Dickie Deal. And we have Ms. Amy Deal. We have Mr. Jason Turner. And I'll ask one of the adults to introduce the little ones.
This is Jesse Delaney. Alexander Deal. Carson Turner.
We appreciate Colonel stopping by. Let's give him my hand. Ladies and gentlemen, during the hearing of citizens, when you come forward, we ask that you give us your name and your district. We ask you to also speak into the microphone so that you can be heard. The hearing of citizens format is not a question and answer format. But I assure you that members of the board will be listening to your comments. Each person coming forward will have three minutes. When the, we do have our lights. When the amber light illuminates, you have one minute. You will be called in the order that you signed up. And the first person to sign up is Mr. Hugh Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
This is Roy Jacobs. I am here. My name is Hugh Thomas, Victor, Virginia. My main residence is 145 Ashton Road, Danville, Virginia, 24540. Also have homes in Danville, in Tunstall area, Gretna, and Chatham. So pretty much everywhere. But where I'm here tonight, while I was discussing with you, and first of all, my background is accountant and I've audited utilities, municipalities, counties, work for a CDA firm until I retired and what have you. And what I'm here tonight to discuss with you is some things that I don't really think that the Board of Supervisors know about the Danville Utilities. And also, Mr. Monday being the administrator, that I just feel like it needs to be brought out and discussed and appreciate your assistance in seeing that we do some things to help the county, people who serve out of Danville Utilities. The utility company is made up of about forty-two thousand customers. Nineteen thousand plus of those customers are people that have served in Pennsylvania County. Now, I've done rate studies for utility companies, such as Beckenburg Electric, all the co-owners, and testified in court with State Corporation Commission in Virginia, Maryland, and Delaware. And so I know a lot about utilities and rates. But in Danville, we have, it was formed back ten years ago, maybe fifteen years ago, a utility commission was formed in the city of Danville. And this utility commission serves as a laser on to the council members over there. The council members don't have to answer to the State Corporation Commission or anybody. They are entities themselves and everything, so they formed this utility commission. This utility commission is made up currently by five, six, seven different people, with one person being from Pennsylvania County. That one person from Pennsylvania County, to my knowledge, is Mr. James Turpin from Danville, who also is a retired employee of the city of Danville. But I feel like the directors of Pennsylvania County Supervisors need to look and we need to have more say-so on the utilities that's surrounding Danville than what we got and everything. Like I said, it's like nineteen thousand customers that are receiving power from the city of Danville. We really don't have a representation, and so they can do what they need to do on rates to balance our budget and what have you. And I've read in the paper that they want to possibly take nine billion dollars from the utility fund and put it over to the general fund in this year's operation or a thing. Now, that sounds well and fine, and that's the city of Danville money, and I guess the city of Danville owns utilities, but you've got to bear in mind that nineteen thousand plus customers made up some of that nine billion dollars that they shifted over.
Excuse me, I was trying to ask you to write this.
Okay. So therefore, I just wish that we would look into it, and I don't think it's, I've been reading the paper. I don't think if anybody on the Board of Supervisors really went in and did it and represented the utilities in the Pennsylvania County areas like they should or a thing. And we've got like five directors, and I know that a lot of the voters are from the city of utilities. Any questions, we'd be glad to answer, or maybe you don't.
Would you keep you trust in your money, your name and number?
My name is Hugh Mitchell. My telephone number is four three four two five oh three six three oh.
Thank you, sir.
Hold number seven nine three eight one six zero.
Thank you.
Appreciate you just viewing and looking into the facts and correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Grant Hearn.
Hello, my name is Grant Hearn. I'm an electrician at Columbia Forest Parks for twenty years now. I'm interested in the Chatham Armory Building as a vice president of IAM, the Institute for Advanced Education. We've been discussing the artist's pool focused on special needs children, mainly with the autistic spectrum. Autism is considered a learning disability, even though the autistic children are geniuses in their own right. They are held back because of their communication and other social problems. Albert Einstein, Thomas Edison, Bill Gates, the rise of Sir Isaac Newton, Thomas Jefferson notes our informable and intelligent, educated men have plastic autistic traits. They have the traits of new world changers, and they don't have a learning disability, they just learn differently. They see and hear and understand differently. Some are more teachable than others, which will find their weaknesses something extraordinary. When I was in LFT school, one out of ten thousand children was diagnosed with autism. It has increased dramatically today, ranks one child out of eighty-eight children. The Center of Disease Control says some places it's one in sixty-eight. It's found in every race. Approximately one out of forty-two boys and one out of one hundred and eighty-nine girls are diagnosed with autism. This is an ongoing and incoming crisis. On February twenty-ninth, I met with flying hire, who's trying to start an autism school in Campbell County. We will be working with them. For the last five years, we have worked with acting out services with Courtney Sleepergood, formerly county administrator, Dan Sleeper's daughter. She teaches autistic kids to cope with and react through trauma. Our organization will form what we call the Project Genius Factory with a recommended curriculum of applied behavior analysis and the STEM Q method of autistic training in science technology, engineering mathematics, R.A. Pythagorean theorem, as well as the arts. Autistic children use these to hide in these areas. We elect the Armory Building for the school. Pennsylvania County has special need classes, but they are overcrowded and underfunded. I hear horror stories of parents in the IED meetings. I recall that the school officials want to put six-year-olds on drugs and hold them back because their kids learn differently than the other kids. And yes, this is still going on. Kids are given mind-altering drugs while their brain is developing. They miss their window of development because of these drugs. They may never outgrow or manage their conditions. They will be sentenced to life that hasn't mentally developed, and someone wants to take care of them and protect them. This would cost often money. If the National Guard is willing to give you back this bill, then take it. If you don't know what to do with it, give it to us, and we will make good use of it. I was labeled autistic at Louisville Elementary School in the nineteen-sixties. I failed about every test. I heard one teacher tell another, I was autistic and I tested, I was tested and had the highest IQ in class. Although autistic meant I could draw pictures, but I didn't build, but that's what I thought even. It was true, though I didn't understand what drawing had anything to do with it. In my early teenage years, we had brought the order and discipline in my life, and I will always be autistic. But now I can manage it. It's not past my life. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, we have Ms. Karen Alley.
Karen Alley, West Howard District, lots to see, truly thanks for playing the board and asking the name of Mr. Karen. I wanted, it's too nice to say that I have attended the agricultural development committee last month. And there it was talked about having, encouraging you to look at the integrated poultry now and also processing plants, which I'm not certain if they're deep or associated with integrated poultry. But it occurred to me because of a meeting I had been to with the Red River Basin Association last summer, and Mr. Morris still was there. A few of us were asked to sort of look at the impact that we thought that the integrated poultry process, processing complex would have on the water in Pennsylvania County. So all we did basically was to contact DQ for the most part and get a list of the impaired waters. And we plotted these out on the map, and we still have that map. But it occurred to me after this meeting that if we are going to be encouraged to look at processing plants and integrated poultry of the nature that the poultry center pointed to, that we really do need to assess and have an understanding of the quality of our waterways in Pennsylvania County as a farm. Because placement of some of the things that go with complexes that will go with processing plant will have an impact on the quality. We need to be mindful that the majority of our citizens are on low water, and runoff from these facilities will impact them as well. So I'm hoping that you will consider before you move forward with any reassess, an assessment of the waterways. I think it can be done inexpensively and perhaps at no cost at all, working with DQ and the Red River Basin Association and the Dan River Basin Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monday.
I might as well just stay and re- I think I've next on the agenda for another item.
You are a new.
Yeah. And this will be very brief, because I had the opportunity to talk with Mr. Hunt just prior to, prior to the meeting. I had questioned him about, and Mr. Monday, about the Agricultural Development Board's ability to conduct business since terms expired for over, for half of them in January, according to the bylaws. And he graciously has been so wonderful communicating with me. He sent something today that has to do with something called a holdover rule, which is, as I understand it, and you have to talk to him about this, he's the attorney, is the office of the Attorney General's opinion on this holdover rule. My understanding is that the bylaws, and we have nothing else to address this in Pennsylvania County, are actually the rule, and they're the law that provides this, not the Attorney General's opinion. So before we move forward with, with the economic development updates here and the Agricultural Development Board proposal, and so the bylaws, especially the bylaws, I hope you postpone doing that tonight. I know the agenda, we've already agreed on the agenda. But until we find out if this is a legitimate, legitimately appointed board legally, we would at this point in time. And I think we're still, I'm still working through it out there, Mr. Hunt still. If he's got an explanation for me tomorrow, I'm sure he'll let me know. But until that time, I think that needs to be answered before we look at this as a legitimate and before we conduct county business at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monday. Next, we have Mr. Richard Schumay.
Richard Schumay, West Howard District. I'd just like to have a word to pray and focus talk tonight. Thank you. My Father in Heaven was so glad to come out tonight. Beautiful weather we've had today. Be with us as we go through this, give us last hand, short-term. And be with each of these board members as they do the business of this county and have them make the right decisions, these things we ask you to make, given. Well, I finished what I started a couple of months ago. I was talking about these cars, we got something over here, and I see it's still sitting over here. Appreciate them every day. The one car that I had information on, and I had it, it was a two thousand four Crown Victoria, used by the sheriff's office. And what I understand is used by management of the Danville Mark, wasn't driven as a Mark car. When we got it, the county let us have it, it had a river being fired for. It had a hundred and twenty-one thousand miles on it. It run like you, it looks good. The only thing that I could, I looked at good, the only thing I could find wrong with it was the seat rail, where your seat went back and forth. Other than that, inside every little bit, there's no reason. Some of our county employees can't get some good use of it. We hire new people, buy new cars, why can't some of these people drive some of these cars? They've got a feel of them all that. And they got all of them, just about all of them, it's got red lights, sirens. Are we going to throw that away, or what's it doing sitting there? And we went in the hole every day. And we brought this car back to the county because that part of the property could not afford the insurance. We couldn't use a car for what we needed, but without the insurance, we couldn't afford the insurance. So when we brought it back, it's sitting over here now with a hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven miles. And it's been sitting over that sort of years, took rotten damage. And I hope you'll fix up, if you don't, remember to take it over to our own recital, or somebody's recital. Hope it's worth the best, and I have it for five years, and some of it ain't that long with me. The other thing is, that dog family. We have been over here and spent a lot of money. And I don't know why we spend all this money. But that one had to first build, build a dog family. And I think this dog family costs less money. And I wonder if we've ever done anything by getting the solar system to see through the pass. I've never been in a garage in my life, and I've been in a garage, give us all the light. It did not have oil, oil in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumay. Next, we have Mr. Roger Jefferson.
Mr. Chairman, I'll pass to this man.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jefferson. We have Mayor Catherine Passer.
I'm Mayor Catherine Passer, I'm in the Chatham District. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I have not planned to speak until I saw the agenda, but simply has Chatham only. And I live on Main Street. So when I open my apartment, I see the Chatham only. I'm concerned, I wish to know tonight your concern. I promised Monday, I also called other towns in Chatham. The persons who do live in the towns in this county do pay county taxes. And I should think the strength of Pennsylvania County is increased by the tanks and the efforts of the tanks. So I want to know some information, and I understand that Pennsylvania County was simply notified that it's only real close, but Danville would stay open. I'm sure there are others that are going to be closed and others that are going to stay open. But the county only was placed with the help of the town getting some consecutively bad acreage in the beginning. It has been well kept. We've gotten a total count on our front. It's safe, it is totally used by the military. And I really think having the National Guard in the middle of Pennsylvania County is preferable to having a National Guard that shares with Danville parks and recreation. It's protected by the addition of one fence to guard North Carolina's border. Should be fully vetted. I want you all to call your legislators, I want you to call anyone to get some information before you decide what's happening to the army. I think we should want to ask questions. And I certainly have great interest in asking you to make sure that Chatham's Main Street stays. There's been very little in the newspaper, and I think that's because there's very little known. And so in the agenda tonight, I repeat, had simply Chatham only with no, and a few other words. I came to fuss like a mother hen or an old woman or to ask citizens' help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President. Next, we have Ms. Deborah Dix.
Deborah Dix, Blair's, Chatham District. Since I was late, I'd like to talk about two things, and I may be able to take up there, because I don't have access. Forward to agricultural bylaws. I hope, I've sent you some information, that the bylaws, as far as choosing members, that all districts are representative. Most districts, most agricultural committees throughout Virginia, all districts are representative. And this county does not represent by district, it represents by animals, which are the district. Because if not, all farmers are listed. So most counties in Virginia has four farm owners on their boards and four citizens members on their boards that own land. I would like for our county to fall in the rest of the districts or counties throughout Virginia and have all bylaws, the bylaws say, that we're all represented by districts, not by animals. Also, the Armory, as she was talking about, I hope that Chatham keeps it when the federal government gives it to you. Because I think it's a great place to be, a neutral area for gymnastics or any use of the gym. And I even think it'd be a good place for this board to convene, since they've got an easy way to get into the building. This, this one's a bit hard, if you don't know where you're going. And water and agriculture, as in poultry and other things. Most of our waterways in this whole county are polluted or impaired by E. coli. That is coming from, going to DQ, farm runoff, old septic tanks, and dogs and deers. What I've studied, and I'm the one that created the map, where biosolids, animal waste is spread throughout Virginia, throughout our county. And in those areas, you can map creeks that are polluted with E. coli. So putting any industry in here, like a poultry processing plant, where stress, our water is even further. Our main waterways, Bannister River, Cherry Stone. All these creeks in the Chatham District, in the Cat Cave District, the Dan River, the Runner River, and the river throughout our area, Sandy River, are all polluted with E. coli from animal runoff, according to DQ. So please, and nobody ever improves on waterways. This has been the present nineteen ninety-six. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dix. That's the last name on the sign up. Ladies and gentlemen, is there anyone here who intends to speak but do not have time to sign up?
Good evening. James D.R., West Howard District. February twenty-fifth, finance committee meeting, I attended. And it was refreshing to hear Mr. Warren, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Scares. They asked some interesting questions at that meeting, I appreciate that. That was sort of encouraging to me. One thing, a moment, Benny, caught my attention at that meeting, was leasing of school buses. The way I understood it, the school leasing buses on three-year lease, for three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a year. Then after that three years, that's for ten buses, after three years, the school owns the buses. But that three-year lease comes up to over a million dollars. And when you consider buses at seventy-five thousand dollars a piece, that's a million and ninety-two thousand dollars over three years to lease it. Now, if you bought them buses straight out, that's only seven hundred fifty thousand. So what is the purpose of leasing rather than purchasing? See, Michael, there's a lot of difference in the money. Matter of fact, you could buy another four and a half buses, but the difference between leasing and purchasing. So that's just something I thought I would ask you, and maybe you've got an answer for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next item on the, the consent agenda, item six. I'm going to turn our conference to the right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a question before you consent.
Second.
I have motion on Mr. Barber and second on Mr. Blackstock, in a discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. And she names. We have a couple of proclamations. Do we have a representative from the Boys and Girls Club here tonight? Would you accept the proclamation? Okay, I'm going to come down and... Would you speak on it, so you can tell us your name, and everybody can hear?
My name is Cindy Martin, I'm the director of the Chatham.
Okay, you're the director, okay. I'll be with you. We have a proclamation from the Boys and Girls Club, because this is March seventh through thirteenth, is Boys and Girls Club Week. I think I'm going to put on some readers, this is some really tiny stuff here. Okay, let's now, Ma, let that go up there. Okay, here we go. Pitts Plain County Board of Supervisors proclamation, Boys and Girls Club Week, March seventh through thirteenth, twenty sixteen. Whereas the young people of Pitts Plain County, Virginia, are tomorrow's leaders, and whereas many such young people need professional youth services to help them cope with a wide range of social and financial hardships, and whereas the Chatham unit of the Boys and Girls Club of Danville area organization is providing services to more than eighty young people last year. And whereas the Boys and Girls Clubs are at the forefront of efforts in academic success, healthy lifestyles, and good character, and leadership. And whereas the Boys and Girls Club organization in our state help ensure that our young people keep off the streets, offering them a safe and supportive place to go, and providing them with quality programs. And whereas the Boys and Girls, the Boys and Girls Club of Pitts Plain County will celebrate National Boys and Girls, Girls Club Week, along with some four thousand one hundred clubs, and more than four million young children and teenagers. Then, now therefore, be it resolved that the Pitts Plain County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim March seventh through March thirteenth, twenty sixteen, as Boys and Girls Club Week in Pitts Plain County. And call our citizens to join in recognizing and commemorating the Boys and Girls Club organization in our state for providing comprehensive, effective services to young people in our communities. On behalf of the Pitts Plain County Board of Supervisors, we wish you well, and we thank you for everything that you all do for our youth. Would you like to say you? No? No? Okay. Well, we got, we got one more from our consent agenda. Uh, we have another proclamation for National Agricultural Day, which is upcoming March fifteenth, twenty sixteen. I think we have Ms. Jessica Jones, would you come forward to accept this? This seemed to be a little bit more difficult, so I'm not going to leave this with Mr. Jones.
Okay.
But I'm just going to say that on behalf of the Pitts Plain County Board of Supervisors, how fitting this is to present this proclamation to you for the upcoming National Agricultural Day. Fitting because agriculture is still the number one revenue provider for the state of Virginia, Virginia, has been and still is. Ms. Jones, being the educator you are, and the leader of the future farmers of America, I know the hard work, the good work that you do, and on behalf of the board and the citizens of Pitts Plain County, we appreciate the effort. We have some really bright, uh, young people that are going to make us proud in the future, and hopefully will continue our legacy in agriculture. So on behalf of the board, present you with this. Would you, would you like to, Mr. Jones? Would you like to say a few words?
Um, just on behalf of the, the young agriculturists and those that are occurring in the future, thank you for continuously supporting agriculture, which as you said is our number one industry, bringing in approximately fifty billion dollars into our state, and knowing that, um, our students and our community and citizens support that, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your... Okay, next on the agenda around the presentation, item seven. We have with us Mr. Matthew Rowe, who is our, our new, the county's new, uh, Director of Economic Development, and he's going to provide us with a presentation.
Mr. Chairman, just back to... Before Mr. Rowe gets started, I just want to point out, because Mr. Schumate is a loyal follower of the Board of Supervisors, and he spoke consistently about some of that surplus property out there. You say you know Mr. Schumate in tonight's, on tonight's agenda, any consent agenda. Part of the consent agenda was authorizing moving forward of a sale of some of that surplus property that's out there. It's been sitting there for a long time. We brought their attention, and, uh, we want to thank Mr. Monday for moving forward to it. But we voted to pass a consent agenda, and that's part of what's on there.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Rowe is on the...
Uh, gentlemen, board members and public attendants, I want to be very brief tonight, and try to break through what I've seen over the past, really, three months of being here in Pitts Plain County. Um, I'd really like for us to, uh, go back in time to October twenty fourteen, when you, as a board, uh, in previous board, were looking at strategic conversation with economic development. Uh, we want to just very briefly go over the action taken by the board regarding economic development, and then hit on the county administrator and board recommendations for economic development, uh, program, but also more importantly, it's always fun, and you'll be comfortable with list of things we want to do, but more importantly is, okay, what are we actually doing, what are we achieving at that list? And, uh, then just very briefly give you some thoughts, uh, from what I see here in the county. And I think it's important that, you know, as economic development director, you, um, I don't really advocate of one certain industry or over another. My job is simply to tell you what your opportunities are, and you as elected officials are to try to attract community if you want to sit in the county. So with that being said, uh, back in twenty fourteen, the board did hold a planning session on economic development, and identified it as a top priority. And this is really a top priority for every county in the state. So, uh, you know, you're right in line with everybody else, it's really a top priority proclamation. The board crafted the following vision statement, Pitts Plain County Economic Development Team shall foster business, industrial, agricultural, friendly, environment, climate entrepreneurship, small business development, and advanced manufacturing, creating a premier destination of tourism. We certainly set the bar pretty high on that one, so I've got my work cut out for me. And the board crafted the following mission statement, Pitts Plain County's Economic Development Team creates, recruits, retains, and expands diverse career and employment opportunities throughout the economy while preserving our agricultural heritage and our quality of life. So we don't want to sell sole economic development, we want to still maintain the community that we cherish and love. Through this process, we also had, uh, board priorities and strategies for the future economic development program, and I want to give all of our, you know, obviously one of the main, uh, items was to be the workforce, strong communication with all board members, continuing that, that had been a priority in the past. Identifying secure funding for economic development strategies, expanding economic development projects to increase county revenue, recruit attable companies, and collaboration with relevant partners. It's very important to go after things that we actually have the ability to, to, to get, and not just go after the things that we think that we want to, and we're just not well suited for at this point in time. Uh, and obviously, in Twenty First Century, created an economic development website. The board unanimously supported the creation of the Economic Development Department, and, uh, thank you very much, uh, gentlemen and citizens, for putting that trust in me while I was hired by the county in December fifteen, twenty four, uh, twenty fifteen. Uh, I know it's very small, I'll just very briefly go through it, uh, because I think it's important for you and citizens, I guess, to move me, uh, for such a high-profile job. I come to you from Charles City County, Virginia, where I was a record planning and economic development. So I did not only economic development, but I also did the planning, zoning, code enforcement, uh, so I got to see all facets of the development process. Uh, before that, I was in Anheuser's County, before that, Matthews County, before that Smith County. So I literally have worked my way up through the ranks by going across the state and seeing how it's done in different parks in the state. Uh, as far as some of my professional accomplishments, I directly led the attraction of more than a billion dollars in private investment. I directly retained and created over five hundred jobs. Initiated and implemented the Charles City County Rural Broadland Project, which that's obviously very important to this county as well. Secured funding and led the creation of the Charles City County Strategic Economic Development Plan. Uh, on the agricultural side, it's pretty unique, but, you know, literally led the initiation, development, expansion of upper show of vendors. And then on the tourism side, secured funding for BTC and led the creation of the Charles City Tourism Website and Natural Task Force. So I literally have learned by fire. Uh, so county administrator and board recommendations of economic development program to the address. These are the key things that you identified, that you agreed on this program to address. Lack of economic development staff. Once again, I'm here, thank you. Uh, lack of infrastructure in the county. And I think the most important is lack of strategies focused towards small business, agriculture, tourism, and advanced manufacturing. Uh, with regards to the lack of economic development staff, uh, if you wanted the staff to revise organizational chart, that's been complete. Hired development director, complete. Development, uh, departmental budgets, that has been complete. Uh, create an effective website, currently in the process, and anticipated completion date is late summer twenty sixteen, so we're working on it. Develop marketing plan, identify budget needs, complete, and is also being implemented. Inventory a list of assets, in the process, and anticipated completion date is early summer twenty sixteen. Uh, it's easy to make a pretty website. It's hard to make a website that actually has a lot of substance. So the hardest part of making a website is getting the content, and it's very timely getting that content that businesses need. With regards to lack of infrastructure, identify existing resources and identify future needs. Uh, we're in the process of doing this. Uh, you know, we're meeting, uh, and we're looking at the possibility of recommending the update to our water and sewer supply plan for the county, for the county corridor. Uh, we're, and I'm a believer, if we're going to do a plan, it should not just be a high-level plan, but we need to actually look at industry of drawings, so we can actually come up with real calls, but more importantly, how do we pay for that after we come up with it? We can literally design a battle tank of a water supply system, and a Cadillac of a water supply system, but if we can't pay for it, you know, it's not going to do us much good. Uh, prepare capital approval plan, so that's to be completed, and I've had this process, obviously being planning director and other locales, uh, so I'll work very closely with Mr. Monday through this process. And then, once again, identifying funding, uh, as part of the CIP process, uh, and we'll put closely the finance department, and we'll also work with our regional, state, and federal partners for identifying local funding mechanisms. Uh, third thing you identified was lack of strategies focused towards small businesses, agribusiness, tourism, and advanced manufacturing. I think you've got this from great, great amount of money. Uh, so we need to develop plans, evaluate, establish, and expand small businesses. I'm in the process of doing this, and I agree entirely on this. We're currently reviewing policies and guidelines for small businesses from other locales throughout the country. I think Ashco Motocarana, uh, does a very, uh, nice job in the way that they set theirs up. Reviewing current business revenue streams and data to determine appropriate and reasonable guidelines for the county. You know, I want to make sure that we always, at all times, try to maintain a positive net revenue stream to this county, and that's to be based upon ultimately, obviously, like capital investment, but we also have to take into account over time the job creation eligibility thresholds as well. Agribusiness considerations, we're in the process, working with the Agribusiness Development Director on identifying opportunities for expansion of existing natural resources-based businesses. Our goal is to create a small business assistance program that includes agribusiness. If it works for small businesses in general, a small farm is a small business. It is. They provide the same value to the county, so it should work for agribusiness as well. Tourism, uh, once again, to be completed. We'll need to work with towns, regional partners, and the Chamber of Commerce is working on this already, and I think that we can just add to that process, working with our Tourism Assets, Virginia Tourism Corporation on marketing and branding strategy. We want to have an consistent focus message of where we go, what we are, uh, when it comes to tourism, and we will need to ensure the town and county policies and regulations encourage and support tourism assets, both existing and new. Rule number one of economic development is, if you want that there, make sure that your policy as far as land use wise is supported. Don't put up roadblocks, but obviously make sure that that policy is also, uh, in good standing and supports the community that you want. Continue communication between all partners, uh, and these are just all the jerks that we work with, uh, and we're liaisons to all our local, regional partners, uh, throughout the area. So here's kind of the meat and potatoes of what I see, uh, right now, based on my experience of just coming to this county, cold turkey. Current, uh, economic development landscape is this. It will be driven by the generational shift, whether we like it or not. My generation, the millennial generation, is now the largest living generation on earth, uh, and that is also the case here in the U.S. What that means is, is that there will be a large number, of course, baby boomers retiring, which will create jobs. It also means that our future labor force is the roughly twenty to thirty-five-year-olds. Uh, and if we want to get our share of that labor force, we're going to have to keep that in mind. Uh, energy policies and prices, that's one of the things that's helping the U.S. economy stay in a growing, uh, sector, very slowly growing, but it's due to the fact that our energy prices compared to elsewhere in the world are relatively cheap. Uh, and, uh, and what happens on the actual macro policies will impact Pitts Plain County as well. Uh, cost of doing business throughout the world, whether we like it or not, globalization is here, there's only but more, uh, global, uh, packs, partnerships coming down the potty. So we need to identify them and try to understand how that's going to impact Pitts Plain County and our region. Onshoring and reshoring. Whoever says that manufacturing is dead is on the ground. Manufacturing is coming back, but it's not the old way of manufacturing, which labor-intensive, it's robotics, it's advanced precision machine, uh, tooling, it's a, it's a lot more, uh, high investment, but less labor. Uh, so, you know, it is coming back, people want to be close to the actual consumers. Uh, the new economy, this is one that is really hard to, for localities to adapt to, but, you know, we have a skills gap, which then leads to the job gap, which then leads to the wage gap, which then goes to the socioeconomic gap. We have to work for our schools, and follow our programs, and be in lockstep to ensure that our folks have the best skills, because if not, they're going to get a lower wage job, and it's eventually going to lead to socioeconomic problems. Uh, continued automation and technological advances, both known and unknown, you know, thirty years ago, who would have known without the internet? It's changed our life. Uh, and the one thing that I can say is that the only servant thing about the Twenty First Century, in my opinion, will be unserviced. It's going to be a wild variety, so saddle up, and we have to just make sure that we're prepared, uh, as best we can. Key sectors for business attraction in this county, advanced manufacturing, high-precision machining, uh, I think that our region understands that, which is why we have had a lot of private investment, uh, at the institute, Gene Haas Integrated Machining Center, and I think we're very well positioned for that, and we should be focusing on European and Northeast US companies for tier-two manufacturing. We're not going to be the assemblies, we're going to be the guys that make the intricate part that gets assembled, because they pay a higher roof wage, they don't employ as many people, but we don't have as large a labor force, uh, and we don't have as good a transportation network to get the product out. So that's what we need to look at, and we look European and Northeast, because we have a cost advantage, typically about forty-five percent cheaper to do business than in Europe, we're about eighteen to fifteen percent cheaper than the Northeast. we're about eighteen to fifteen percent cheaper than the Northeast. So that's where we should be. Clean energy, solar, combined cycle, intero digestors, once again, the macro policies driving that. Natural resource and agriculture, we need to look at valuable export products, processed agriculture and food beverage items, really do our transportation network and affect the, we have a lot of product. And encouraging the creation and expansion of small farming operations. Distribution of warehousing, I really see that as a strong asset in the Golden Part of the county due to rail. Tourism-related industries, market capital aesthetics of the county and our historical cultural resources. These are the things we should be marketing. This is really one of the reasons, frankly, why I applied this job, because, you know, just like you market a business, you kind of marketed me. Low cost of living, so we need to make sure that we have a lot of revenue coming in as far as tax revenue to all new businesses to keep that low cost of living. Strong county schools. One of the things that's very unique here is you have a residential component for everybody. You can live in the country in forty acres, you can live in a nice, small-town environment, or you can live in the suburban area in the southern part of the county. Tractored natural surroundings and climate, you know, we have a very agreeable climate. Affordable industrial sites, strong industrial pass infrastructure, competent, tolerant governance, funded agricultural products. But more importantly, I think, is regionalism as well. We're working together, the region, to help it sell down. So very quickly, things I think we need to do here at year one is we need to complete a user-friendly economic development-focused website that highlights sites, infrastructure, financial considerations, workforce, and the quality of living. These are the things that businesses are going to look for. Need to compile property folders for available sites, utilize allocated marketing funds to actively market key opportunity sites. Create marketing material for those sites. Start conducting market-based studies and analysis on key opportunity sites. Recommend initiating and developing agricultural development strategic plan and focuses on agriculture as a whole, and identify as target industries, and provide key strategies and possible sites, identify for those industries, we can get agent funding for that. Work with the towns and Chamber of Commerce to continue the tourism and D H C D Main Street improvement grant. This is one I'm sure that everybody loves, and we're actually in the process of doing this. Work with internet providers and other stakeholders to improve rural internet service. We want to make sure that our rural areas have internet, so that way home-based businesses can take a credit card, because every time their credit card spikes, more money goes into our local businesses' pocket, and also allows our kids to compete with the kids in Northern Virginia as far as legal home work. All homework at this age is done over the internet. Not to mention ESPN3's phone as well. Recommend updating of outdated county and wastewater studies, and once again, focus on development, long-term, sustainable solution for providing water, wastewater up to twenty-nine corridor and down to twenty-nine corridor, and whole community input meetings to determine what citizens want economic development-wise in the county, and how they can work with me, the county staff, and the rest of our county staff to address them. These are just some of the sites that I think that we have a lot of opportunity in marketing, and you'll notice that these are sites that are, you know, throughout the county. So in the northern part of the county, we have a lot of great sites, but these sites seem to be marketed for specific industries. In the southern part of the county, we have a lot of great sites, but they need to be marketed for different industries. What works in the north is not going to work in the south, and vice versa. We're a huge county, and we have to use that to our advantage. And we'll also continue to be working with our city of Danville partners, one of the regional industrial facility and authority properties, so we have a tremendous asset in our existing sites. So initial strategy is this, and we're already doing this, in my opinion, with some success, focus ninety percent of our resources on helping existing businesses and ten percent on attracting new businesses. A lot of folks will spend a lot of money on trying to get the big fish to come in. If I can take the small fish and turn it into a big fish, I'm happy with that. Four singles equals the same score as one home run. So I think that's how we have to look at this. Create and implement incentive policy that is small business-focused. Find creative ways to improve rural internet telecommunications. Market closer with our regional friends. If we do well, Danville does, and vice versa. Produce various of tourism and find unique means for accommodations. Focus on business operations between ten to one-hundred-and-fifty employees. That's going to be our winner there, in my opinion. Market distribution potential, once again, from Golden Half of County, and target millennials who are looking for low cost and unique subplace, but we also have to focus on baby boomers who are looking to retire in a low-cost area with a breathable climate. They're going to be halfway. They can't move all the way to Florida, it's too far. They're going to stop here, and then work to change the narrative and perception regarding Southern Virginia, and I think that's the many more. So let's have a positive message come out about Pittsavina County. Danville, get out how great it is to live here, because unfortunately, as an outsider coming in, I think the folks that are here have taken for granted what it is that this area provides, and I can tell you, as an outsider coming in, you've got something special here, and you really need to market it and let others know about how great it is to be here in Southern Virginia. So with that being said, if you have any questions that you have, I'd just really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. Any comments? Mr. Robb?
Mr. Chair, I want to ask you, you touched on transportation to get it out. What are you speaking specifically there? What type of transportation, air?
Uh, no, we're looking at rail, intermodal access versus rail. You have, you know, a, you know, so many four-lane highways in this county, fifty-eight, twenty-nine. I mean, twenty-nine truly is, when you take out, you know, eighty-one, obviously, from an infrastructure standpoint, is a better rate, there's certainly not that. But when you add in the inconvenience of the typical traffic on eighty-one, and the higher rate of accidents on eighty-one, so on and so forth, and the fact that twenty-nine is actually more direct as far as going from north to south, because eighty-one typically actually, in a lot of places, actually goes from, from east to west, you'll find that twenty-nine corridor is very special, and I think they would be very surprised in knowing the amount of product that actually is going from north to the south down the twenty-nine corridor. So I think it's very important, and then also as far as connecting that rail to a quarter of Virginia.
Mr. Robb?
Uh, Mr. Robb, thank you for your presentation. I kind of had a bad angle, but referring back to Things to Do page, your bullet item number five, and part of that was the, of course, the integrated poultry, which we've heard about already tonight. So I'm assuming that in that, part of your study is going to involve that and all the parameters that go with, along with the water, potentially water issues and everything. I think that's very important, because I think we need to, to realize our agricultural folks need some direction on where we're headed as a county and as a board, to assist them in making their decisions on where they want to go. And as part of that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that, in particular, for the new Board members that have just recently come on, I know you all visited some integrated poultry plants that we, as new Board members, then have an opportunity to visit. I think we would all like to possibly have that opportunity, if it can be arranged again, and go with Mr. Robb to visit those, so we can be better informed in the future. Those folks are very important, the agricultural folks are very important, and we need to do all we can to give them all the information that they need. I agree, hold on.
Any other comments, questions for Mr. Robb?
One more question, Mr. Chairman. You're talking about the internet site, and establishing a good internet site. I agree with that. But me and Ms. Moran, we've talked about, what about having a real individual as well? That is, for a presentation, I mean, let's say that there's a corporation in New York City that does this area, or these, the things that you've already got lined up, and we only have just the internet to go on. It could be popping and booming, and that's great, but would it also require a human to make contact with them? That's what I was asking about as far as marketing's concerned.
Yes, sir, that would be me. So when we have somebody like that, I'm going to get in my car, and I'm going to drive up to New York, and do whatever we have to do as far as to meet with them and make them feel comfortable in Pittsavina County, and you don't want to make them feel comfortable with them.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Mr. Schlesky, yes.
I just wanted to say, I'm glad you're on board. I've been impressed with you in the first meeting, and I think you're going to do a lot of great things for the county, so I hope we can work well together. I believe you will.
I'd just, I'd also like to point out that I've been in several meetings with you, somewhere in northern end of the county, and in southern with all of Burlington property and some other sites, but I've been very impressed with the way that you researched complex, complex data, and then were prepared to present it, answer questions in group settings. You're also working the whole county, which is what we want, and I'll pre, you hit the ground running, and I've been impressed, and I'll keep up the work.
Thank you, Mr. Robb.
Sure, I'll take the ground running. This is, that, and that's a piece, a piece for a short while, but it's good to have a presentation like this for the Board, so thank you very much. We're bound to, I have made this taken off the agenda for a bound-to-do business, I have known. Blackstock, Chair, is the Finance and Insurance Committee. Mr. Blackstock?
Finance Committee, they've recently prepared the annual budget, and we do have the recommendation for the Board tonight, and I turned over to Mr. Monday. He actually has the question.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, good evening. What I'd like to do is just take a few minutes and highlight the budget summary that was brought out of the Finance Committee and is being brought to the Board for their consideration this evening. Since the last budget, some of the things that the county has done to move the county forward includes addressing the twenty million dollars in middle school construction projects. Two components of that, US of Board, have successfully paid down five million dollars of that debt from the fund balance, and also directed the staff to proceed with permanent financing of the remaining fifteen million dollars. That should be brought to you by our bond council and financial advisors, most likely at your adjourned April meeting. You've also advanced the animal shelter project to the pre-bid phase that we're working on now. You're preparing to start the middle school parks renovation project, adding the walk-in trails, the shelters, playgrounds, and amenities at the county middle schools, and also you added two new compactor sites. Some of the guided principles that the Finance Committee used to prepare the draft budget this year include new tax or fee increases, reviewing all requests closely, funded only vital operational and capital projects. What does the budget include? Included in this year's budget would be a new compactor site in the Keeland community, initial expenses for the next real estate reassessment. County's on a four-year reassessment cycle. Twenty-fourteen was the last, twenty-eighteen will be the next. Takes us about a year and a half to go through that process. The one percent VRS mandate were in the last year of the five percent phase in, and also a two percent cost of living adjustment for all full-time county employees and employees in constitutional offices. You have funded in place for a tourism project in concert with the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Danville. Principal plus interest to start paying down the remaining fifteen million dollars over fifteen years for those school capital costs that I touched on earlier. A local appropriation of sixteen point seven million dollars for education, and on the rise is up to another three hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars of carryover funds for FY sixteen to FY seventeen. School operating budget contingent upon such savings in the current fiscal year's school operating budget. This would provide level local funds for education to accompany additional funded included in the state budget. Carryover of up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of unexpended funds for fire rescue expenditures, including training, communications, and seventy thousand dollars towards cost of second angles. Twenty-five thousand dollars for a jail study update, and finally, a balloon payment of one point eight million dollars for the final payment of two thousand nine re-finance of school and landfill bonds. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to reemphasize that new tax increases were in the proposed budget, and I would like to get on to the main tax rates, just to remind everyone of what those are. The real property tax rate will remain fifty-nine cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value at one hundred percent of market value. Mobile homes and barns, fifty-nine cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value at one hundred percent market value. Machinery and tools, four dollars and fifty cents per one hundred of assessed value at ten percent of the original cost. Contract carrier at four fifty per one hundred of assessed value at fair market value, and personal property at eight dollars and seventy-five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, which is at thirty percent of the market value. And I will point out that the five dollar per month, per household solid lease fee has been eliminated, therefore, that revenue is no longer in the full fiscal county budget. And, Mr. Chairman, again, as Mr. Blackstock alluded to, the Finance Committee today approved the FY sixteen-seventeen budget and recommends advertisement of this budget to the full Board Supervisors, and to set the public hearing for Monday, March twenty-first, at seven P.M. in this room. Adoption of the budget will occur subsequently on April fourth at seven P.M. at the regular meeting of the Board Supervisors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. You just moved to the other. Moran, is this clear, or call me?
Uh, Mr. Schlesky.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Well, I want to thank Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to support advertising, for the very reason Mr. Monday did point out, that it's three million plus coming out of unappropriated surplus, and there's a lot of business people in here, and I think we're setting ourselves up for failure next year, this is my opinion, but that didn't get quoted, but it was three million dollars, is that correct, Mr. Monday? Unappropriated surplus in this budget?
Yes, sir, included that balloon, David.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Blackstock?
Based on Mr. Ballmer's comments, I feel like I need to speak up. There is a little three million dollars coming out of our surplus funds, but it's a one-time payment of one point eight million dollars to pay off a bond in that three point two million. When you take a look at historically, our budget and our surplus that's left over at the end of the year, many times, we have over a million dollars left over, because we estimate the budget on conservative side. So if you take into account, historically, we have somewhere around a million dollars left, you're at two point, with a million eight plus the million that we historically have left over, we are at two point eight million dollars. That leaves only somewhere around the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars shortfall. And so with a, with us cutting one point six million dollars out of revenue, which I reminded Mr. Ballmer, you live in charge, to cut that out of there, we, we will hopefully find ways to make up that loss of revenue in the future, but we, we have to move on with county business, and I feel confident that we are in a strong financial position based on what Kevin Roddy from PFM said, the county was in good shape. So I'm excited about the direction we headed in with Pittsavina County. I think we are in sound financial condition. We paid off five million dollars, we heard this citizens loud and clear, we paid off five million of the twenty million dollar bonds, Mr. Fizjel, that you spoke about several months ago, were concerned about, and we are putting into place, and hopefully in the next couple of months, and being in place to permanently finance the remaining fifteen million principal and interest. That can had been kicked down the road for many years by previous boards since '07, if I, if I think I'm right on that. So I'm excited about the work that was put into the budget, and I'm also excited about the expertise that some of the new Board members, all of the new Board members bring to the table. So with that said, I'm moving on.
I'd just like to say that, I think, but Moran?
Just have one comment, I think it's important to the citizens. The one point eight million dollars that will be paid down, that is debt, so it should have no effect on our credit ratings and our bond rates and for future notes. So that's a positive note when they come in to rate us, and all that you know, we had a really strong rating before, and this should not jeopardize that because of the way the process goes with rating. When you're eliminating long-term debt, it generally does not have a negative impact on it.
Mrs. Harris?
There's one issue that I have with this as well, taking three point two million out of the general fund. That fund is brought, as of December of two thousand and fifteen, it had thirty-four, close to thirty-five million in it, and we're now down to roughly twenty-four million. we're now down to roughly 24 million. So we're going to take another $3.2 million out of this fund, and I think we're setting ourselves up for failure next year. I would much prefer to see a more balanced budget, meaning that our tax revenues equal our expenditures. So it's kind of hard for me to go back to my constituents and show them that we're spending an extra $3.2 million this year. And they have to live by what's in their checking account. I can't understand why the county can as well. But like I said, I cannot support this at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. Can we have Chris?
You know, the thing about it, we could sit here and argue about what may, what has happened, what will happen, and so forth. The simple thing about it, next year, we all know that we're going to buy, and we all know that taxes will go up. I cannot imagine that we can possibly get, I give ISEs as we have this year. So I certainly agree with two of the gentlemen here that I don't think I want to change with public money and public taxes. So of course, I'll be.
Thank you, David. I think Mr. Blackstock summed it up. In fact, I know that Mr. Blackstock summed up my thinking, and I want to thank the county administrator and staff. We had credible, good information, very timely. It was explained to all of us thoroughly. I think that it would have been okay if we had board members who felt like they needed some extra time to think about things, but that didn't transpire. We did have some budget work sessions. So it's one thing to disagree or oppose, but whether we vote in favor or not, no board members are any less accountable or responsible. If I oppose the budget, then I think I have the responsibility to bring something to the table. I feel like the finance committee did a great job. And again, I think that was due mostly because of the good information and budget, recent budget explanation and research that was provided to us. So I feel fine with the budget as it is, and I will vote in favor. If there's nothing else, all in favor, please put in. And for the proof. Any votes? I am, and I am, B, we have the expenditure refund in January and February. I will entertain a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the expenditure refunds to county authority of 2016.
Will you add, Mr. 41,134, 32 seconds?
Yes, sir. I add a motion.
Motion by Mr. Barbara, second by Mr. Hainan.
This is today, though.
Now, in C, we have appropriation of landfill compact to repair. Mr. Monday?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Airspace in the landfill is not a good thing. The goal is to compress the garbage as much as we can. That way, we maximize the lifespan of the landfill. Equipment that we use at the landfill is extremely expensive. We use a machine called a compactor. You see a picture of that in your board packet. It has these big knobby type tires on it, very heavy piece of equipment. We have two of those. We have one that's primary, and we have a backup. And that is a requirement that we have by DEQ to have the equipment to compress the garbage down so that we can have adequate field on the landfill. This particular backup model is a CAT 836G. It needs a transmission repair. We try not to put a lot of money in the budget for big repairs. We try to handle the normal maintenance and the line items that we have in the budget on a regular basis because we never know when the big one is going to hit. This particular time, the backup piece of equipment needs the repairs that I mentioned. And we do recommend appropriate $37,934 from unappropriated funds to the line item that's in your board packet so that we can make this repair. We haven't hit it out, and we know we have a most competitive price. And, Mr. Chairman, this will require 10-day review and a motion at that.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. Do we appropriate $37,934 from unappropriated funds to line over 520-4-042400-603400.
Say your motion by Mr. Blackstock, and the second by Mr. Barbara, and the required in a review. Thank you. Item 10, agriculture rescue study, committee report we have with us, Mr. Dean Powell, President of Fire Prevention Association. Mr. Powell.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we thank you for coming in tonight. You all in January asked Mr. Monday and myself to formulate a committee to look at the fire and rescue study and formulate a strategic plan and bring it back to you all. We have formulated a committee, and I just wanted to come to you all tonight and let you know who certainly a committee. Some of the committee members are with me. We're going to have Mr. Scott Hudson, he's the chief down at Reno, volunteer fire department. He also works for Roseburg Fire Department, has a lot of experience there. Chief Mike Neal with Ringo, he's been in the fire service of this county, right, at 40 years. So he brings a vast knowledge with him. Also wanted is Scotty Adams, who is the captain of Green Branch Rescue Squad, and has been for a good while. Eric Colbert from the Hurt Fire Department is on the committee, working with us. Mr. Jim Davis, who's emergency management director for the county. He's been there for some period of time, so he knows the county realm. Mr. Steve Bone, with me tonight, he's a fire marshal. He knows state enforcement as well as fire prevention. We're going to include that in, we recommend for this study. Grace Lacy, she's for the Rodible Community. Grace has been involved in fire and rescue for years. She's been a strong supporter, and knows a lot of the departments, and is able to bring that input into the committee. Mr. Ron Ware, he's the key with the fire department, he's on board directors there, is serving on other boards as well in the county. We have sat down as a group, we have formulated a mission statement and a business statement, and we're going to work through those to the deliver strategic plan, and hopefully have you all some information back from this. Thank you.
Mr. Powell, what's that? Is anybody? Okay. Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
I am, and I am, and I am, the county development board, Mr. Sides.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I think it's pretty well covered in your board package, but I will have hit the highlights that Pennsylvania County Agriculture Development Board was formed, the high board supervisor, in about 2007, to serve primarily as an advisory board on agricultural related issues. The board supervisor, the county development board, and the chairman, along with their legal counsel, they have seen fit to update, amend, and revise their bylaws. One of the sections that we have added to the new bylaws, I say, we just have to support the act, is we put in there that bylaws will now need to be approved, amended bylaws need be approved by the board supervisor. So that's why we're bringing them before you tonight. Attached in your package is a copy of the current bylaws and a copy of the draft proposed bylaws. There are not a lot of significant changes, but I'll just highlight a few. And one of the significant changes, again, based on some of the advice from legal counsel, is they may be revising the name from Agricultural Development Board to Pennsylvania County Agricultural Advisory Committee, kind of better describe what this body does in terms of being an advisory body. So based on that recommendation, that's proposing the bylaws. We've also tweaked the membership slightly, in that in the previous version, there were a significant number of non-voting members. The non-voting members, since they didn't actually vote, a lot of the participation just wasn't there from that group. So the recommendation was, let's just focus on the voting members. That's been changed to 13 voting members, so you have an odd number, it had been 14 before. And we tweaked the membership slightly in that, based on the advice from the ag board itself, some of the agricultural sectors were a little bit difficult to find representation. So we've got, I think they proposed three agribusiness, which is generally not to cover anybody who runs their living or financially is involved in agribusiness. To answer about the major significant changes, we touch on a few things in the ordinance, such as staff participation is still there. That myself, as economic development director, myself as county administrative representative, and I directed agribusiness development, Mr. Wyler will still be participating with the body. Again, we're here before you tonight because of the recommendation that this be approved by the board supervisors. You see in your packet a resolution from the Agriculture Development Board that was passed on February 25th that says therefore be resolved that they recommend to the Pennsylvania County Board Supervisor that its bylaws be amended and set forth in the attached into the day. How bad for your consideration, the staff does have one revision, it's shown on the bottom of page 44 with the red highlighting. We are proposing that that bullet point be amended to read in the event of a vacancy in the position of Director of Agribusiness Development. The Pennsylvania County Agriculture Advisory Committee Chairman, or is designated, shall serve on the county search committee to recruit, interview, and recommend replacement for said vacancy in accordance with all applicable Pennsylvania County policies and procedures. This has been, this provision, proposed revision, has been brought to the attention of the current chairman of the Agriculture Advisory Board, and he's accepted that particular proposal. So what you have in your packet now is a proposed version. You're free to consider this. County attorney was somewhat involved, along with the legal counsel of Mr. Jim Wonya. I will attempt to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Sides, thank you very much. Mr. Warren.
I believe we move forward with approving the new bylaws of, well, the Pennsylvania County Agriculture Development Committee.
It's advisory committee.
Advisory committee.
We have a motion out, Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Barbara. Discussion.
Mr. Sides, one of the concerns that I have in reading in the packet is, is anybody taken these bylaws and read Mr. Wyler's job description to make sure that they don't come and that, I'm concerned with that chain of command. Mr. Wyler's a county employee, and I want to make sure that it's clear that he's supervised by county employees. And I don't know what's in that job description, but I want to make sure that this is the time to clear all this up.
Yes, sir. We are clear on that. When I was involved, I made it clear to the board that he is a county employee. He now reports directly to Mr. Rowe. That's been discussed with the full Agriculture Development Board, so I don't think anybody would question that at this point. And I think the proposed amendments that's in your board packet tonight clarify that the active element, advisory committee, is welcome to be involved in the search committee, but it's going to be a county process, and that impolites the coverage of the county policy.
Mr. Sides, I was relating to what Mr. Blackstock said. I thought there might be an inference, I don't remember, I think it's in Article II, I thought there was a slight inference about that maybe the advisory committee would provide supervisory guidance. So that's a question for me, too. So without having any prior conversation with Mr. Blackstock, we ended up at the same place on that. So I think we need to make sure that there's no language shift or that effect. The other thing that I noticed was, I do have a concern about the performance, about the advisory committee providing input on the annual performance evaluation. It just seems like that might be a little bit problematic. I can, I guess I can live with it, but I'm going to just sort of hitchhike on what Mr. Blackstock said. We just need to be absolutely sure. So, Mr. Monday, can we, can we look at that, look at the job description again?
Certainly could. I see Mr. Warren's.
I would like to defer to the county attorney because according to you and Mr. Blackstock, those concerns were addressed with you in relationship to the status of his employment being a county employee and not... According to what I received, there was not going to be any conflicts or any problems developed from that. Can you address that, Mr. Hunt?
Sure. It's, what I think that's given to be a heartburn is the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th bullet, the one on page 46. And it says that they will submit an evaluation to Pennsylvania County Administrator about the Director of Agribusiness Development's goal, his performance evaluation. That is not his only performance evaluation. That is just one portion that Mr. Monday, or his supervisor, Mr. Rowe, will utilize to give him his annual recommendation related to job performance. Also, the change is recommended in the package also allows the inference that he's an employee of PCACC to be clearly demonstrated that he's a county employee. If the board wants us to clean up anything, or would like to reexamine any portion of the staff, be happy to, to massage as any way that you deem fit. These changes have to be approved by the board supervisors. So anything the board wants to change in this, you have the right and the ability to do so. So we can certainly make sure that your wishes are clearly demonstrated in these bylaws.
Chairman, my viewpoint of this, you know, I certainly appreciate your concerns you and Mr. Blackstock has displayed, but that, to me, their evaluation as an advisory committee coming back to him as part of his evaluation only gives Mr. Rowe another tool to help him in completing the evaluation he would for, you know, as his immediate supervisor.
Mr. Blackstock?
I just want, what I want to do is I want to make sure that the evaluation that counts, certainly I have no problem with the advisory council having input as far as his evaluation. If that evaluation is not the evaluation, the key evaluation would be the one that, just like every other county employee has, the next person up in the chain of command writes evaluation, am I correct, Mr. Monday? And then that person supervises eventually reviews the evaluation with Mr. Wyler.
That's correct.
And so as long as that's apparent, I'm okay. It's just, I didn't quite understand that to be the case when I read this. And we got to remember, we also need to remember that going into closed session is how we ended up in court about this to start about evaluation. So I would assume that this would have to be talked about in public session because they don't have the authority to hire or fire Mr. Wyler. Is that right?
That is correct.
So any discussion, is that right, Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
All right. So any discussion about Mr. Wyler's performance would have to be done in open session. So everybody knows that, so we don't get in trouble. Again, I don't, I don't particularly want to assert a court, American Circuit Court judge, unless I'm the, getting ready to receive some money from somebody down here. The second thing that I've got, that I want some answers on, in item C, the last line, I think you all read it, Mr. Barbara, the chair will communicate with the CA, I'm assuming it's CA, it's county administrator, I think probably that needs to be spelled out, in the supervision of the... out, in the supervision of the Director of Agribusiness Development. Do we want the Chair of the Advisory Council to go coming to you each time, Mr. Monday, or should he go to Mr. Wyden's direct supervisor? I want to make sure that we, I want to make sure I understand, the advisory council's not supervising Mr. Wyden at all. They just, if they want something done, they feel like he needs to do, they would come to either you or Mr. Rowe. Is that what we're saying?
I think it would be Mr. Rowe, the direct supervisor, would have a better accountability chain of command.
Do we need to say that the Director of Economic Development, in his absence, the commi...
Yes, sir. I agree. The first level supervisor would be Mr. Rowe, so it starts there, and then goes to the second or the third. I can yield, I'm willing to yield, Mr. Hunt, if you're, if you think that this is what we have in terms of revised bylaws, I'm willing to yield and see how it goes. And if it starts to be problematic in any area, then we need to, we need to make some changes. Mr. Blackstock, are you...
What do we need to do here? We will clean them up, bring them back to us, or can you make the changes based on what we can do in that?
Mr. Monday?
Mr. Chairman, if I may offer a suggestion, I'm just listening to the feedback, and I just penciled in something for the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet point, and let me see if I can get this right as a possibility. The way that bullet point reads now, it says periodically evaluate the performance of the Director of Agribusiness Development in accomplishing the goals of the P C A A C and submit an evaluation to the Pennsylvania County Administrator. As a possibility, what if it read, offer feedback on the performance of the Director of Agribusiness Development in accomplishing the goals of the P C A A C, period? Would that clean up that component? And that would be convinced them with the job description, and of course, that would go through as only one component of the Director's performance.
That would conclude some wording. Now, that is annual evaluation, and that would be utilized as annual evaluation.
Yes, sir. I think we could dovetail that in there as well.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman, then Mr. Barber?
You know, I certainly agree with what you're talking about. And, Mr. Administrator, I certainly, I really want this cleaned up. He is there as our employee, and he would come under the direction of Mr. Rowe, and that's the way it should be. We certainly cannot have people out, hurting the feelings of people who work for us, and that is it only, if you work for us, doing the best you can, you know, that we're talking about. So, sure, that's my viewpoint of this, and I think that's, you know, hopefully we'll wind up with that once and for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Mr. Warren?
Mr. Hunt, are you gonna send this back to them? Are we gonna be able to vote on this? Because they approved this, we will be able to make amendments, will we? You're allowed to make suggestions, since we've gotten into three or four changes now.
Wait a minute, you said we're allowed to make suggestions. We have found approval.
Correct. That's indicated at the very last line on page fifty, any bylaw that is required will be supervised, so you can change it whatever you want. Mr. Monday and I were just talking, if you desire for the staff to make these three or four changes, we can do so, and we can bring it back to you on the consent agenda of the next meeting with a red line, and if it's okay with you, you can approve it. If not, we can pull it off and discuss it about it again. Is that easier for everybody, because instead of just making suggestions on the flies, they don't have the week to review it, and we'll get a final clean version?
Is there any rush on it?
We just need to have something placed by approximately May first, so it's approximately that time.
We're already past the desired date, but I think at this point, with Mr. Hunt's advice, that the people continue in that position, and I think we can certainly bring it back in another meeting.
Then I'll offer a substitute motion to send it back to staff to clean it up, if we can, we'll let it on the next adjournment.
Second.
So Mr. Blackstock has a substitute motion, Mr. Hagerman. Any discussion on the substitute motion? All in favor, raise your hand, right hand. All right, that's fine. Okay. All right. Okay, I'm seven. All right. Item twelve, resolution twenty sixteen oh three oh one, sure. Monday, you want to deal?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, in two thousand and fourteen, this Board adopted a similar resolution, T L A, the Chatham Lake Administrative Commission. Then on February ninth of this year, voted to support House Resolution twenty-nine twenty-nine, as introduced by Congressman Perk, known as Supporting Home Owners Rights Enforcement Act for the Shore Agribusiness on the Rock. And T L A also suggested that the member localities and communities aboard this bill. The bill's purpose is to minimize infringement on the exercise and enjoyment of private property rights when issuing hydroelectric power licenses. This is offered for the Board's consideration. The highlights of this resolution is on page fifty-six of your board packet. And, Mr. Chairman, if the Board decides to support this resolution, we would need approval of Resolution two thousand and sixteen dash zero three dash zero one, and authorize the County Administrator to sign the resolution forward to T L A.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. I will adjourn the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hagerman? A motion by Mr. Hagerman, and seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion?
The motion will include approval of the resolution and the operating authorization for the County Administrator to sign Resolution twenty sixteen oh three oh one for T L A.
Okay, Mr. Hagerman, you can add that to your motion.
Yes, sir. I will add that.
Okay, Mr. Barber, just a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. And she handles, thank you.
Thank you.
And thirteen, seven panels, Supervisor Davis.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, Board of Members, the Supervisor Committee, as well as constituents. Pennsylvania County, in my opinion, is poised, as Mr. Matt Rowe so eloquently brought forth, we're poised for new technology, new industry, and I'm for that. I'm for that for our youth, as well as the legal age of the twenty-five, I think he said, through the thirty-six years sector there. We have the opportunity that's posing in Pennsylvania County, as well as in my district alone, solar energy is going, I'm not sure exactly how it's been, the property that's been zoned. However, I spoke with Mr. Sides earlier today, that technology is coming. It's in the state of North Carolina, I've seen the setups there, you can see one on twenty-nine. Those things are coming. And so, I believe that as the Board of Supervisors for the state of Virginia, I don't know for sure if it's around Pennsylvania County, but I know we don't have any in Pennsylvania County as far as those tables are concerned. But be that as it may, I think that we need to implement legality in place, so that way, when those boards and those panels come, we need to have information set up of regulations. So that way, we keep our people safe, as well as keeping the business viable. However, I do concur with Mr. Mitchell. Danville, Virginia, if this is placed in my district, these panels, Danville, from what I'm gathering, is going to purchase the electricity from that. However, I do agree with Mr. Mitchell. Pennsylvania County needs good representation with Danville and that Utility Commission. I do believe that. However, I will give you just a quick synopsis. This is coming from the state of North Carolina. I will give you very quickly Article One, general provisions. This would deal with the title, the purpose, the authority of these sites, jurisdictions, definitions. Article Two would be site development requirements, which deals with setbacks, security, height, buffers and landscaping, decommissioning, these things have to be decommissioned, as well as commissioned. Applicable codes, as well as inspections. Then you come to Article Three, legal provisions. These are procedures for solar farm development, approval, penalties for violations, variance, amendments, and on like it goes. But, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we refer this to the Legislative Committee. So I make a motion that would refer this to the Legislative Committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Blackstock. Any discussion? All in favor?
I know of three of these, we've been involved in heavily now, when it broke, most of them have to get serious subsidies survived, so I don't think there was any big thing that's good to have regulations that were installed. I hope so.
Thanks, Mr. Warren. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. And she handles, Mr. Monday? Thank you all.
And fourteen, the Chadon Farming. Mr. Blackstock? Did I surprise you?
I'm there.
I have two names here. Either one.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, take you all the way back to nineteen fifty-four. I don't remember it very well, it was B C, before Clarence Thomas. But what I read, in the history of the county, the Board of Supervisors conveyed five acres to build a Virginia National Guard armory down below us on South Main Street. The county also agreed to maintain the building and the grounds, and that is a shared formula. Twenty-five percent of those costs, including operating capital, they're reimbursed by the Department of Military Affairs. So for quite a long time, the county has been paying three fourths of those costs. The building is thirteen thousand five hundred square feet, with about half of it roughly, of it being gymnasiums, the rest of it is office and storage space. In February of this year, the Virginia National Guard held a news conference and announced closure of the Chadon Armory. It is believed, and I emphasize believe, that the county may have the right of first refusal to own that property, but I will point out that the final decision rests with Commonwealth of Virginia. So the question that the Virginia National Guard leadership has asked, that I give to you for your consideration is, does the Board of Supervisors wish to own that property? If you do so, what we would do is a voice vote, and if the majority of the Board says, yes, we would like to own that property, what I would do would be notify the Guard leadership tomorrow and let them know that. If the vote is affirmative that you want to own the property, what they suggest that you do next would be to bring forth two pieces of legislation for your approval that Mr. Hunt would work on. Those two instruments would be a resolution. The resolution would direct staff to transfer the deed, to, you know, sign certain documents and so forth. And also, there would be an interim agreement, agreeing who's gonna pay for what, and the county's gonna occupy and take care of the building and so forth. So if the answer is yes, you'd like to own the property, we will bring you back those two instruments at a future meeting when Mr. Hunt has those ready. We would then send that along to the Guard Leadership, which would also go to the Commonwealth of Virginia. At some point in time, an answer will come, telling whether the county can own that property or not. The Board does not have to make a decision at this time, what the future of that site would be if you wish to own the property. That, of course, can come later. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll offer that up for the Board's consideration and discussion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Blackstock?
Yes. I personally think that the Board would be interested in that property. It's, obviously, we recently had a Christmas party over there, I think, year before last. The building appears to be in reasonably good shape. My concern is, I don't, I want to be careful, I don't want us to accept a property that may have some type of environmental contamination on it, and then we be responsible for cleaning it up. The, any documents that's drawn up can be put in another phase, environmental phase one is to be conducted, and we negotiate with them, hopefully at their expense. We've been paying, I suppose, twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars a year for a long time, to maintain the building and so forth, but I think that the use that they got out of it, that they could certainly pay for that before we accept type to, if the rest of the Board is interested in accepting.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Warren?
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we move forward with letting the Guard know that we are interested in reacquiring the property that was given to them. I think Ms. Plaster made an excellent point tonight, that there's many things that could be done with that, could be beneficial to the county and to the town of Chadon. And I will make that recommendation, and I do concur with Mr. Blackstock, we need to do our due diligence before we actually take ownership of it, and those things can certainly be worked out, but I'll make that motion so we can get it going forward.
Okay. Mr. Hunt, is the motion in order, exactly, or just simply show a hand?
Just show hands.
Okay, so we don't need the motion?
No, you need a due motion to authorize the County Administrator to...
We have a motion by Mr. Warren, who's second.
Mr. Barber?
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Agent fifteen, we deleted from the agenda. We're at item sixteen, with the question for whether they're handling it. Mr. Sides?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The story was approached by an organization that now owns two hundred and twelve acres in the various communities of the county on Georgia's Lane. The organization is the Wildlife Foundation of Virginia, and they require this property for purposes of wildlife management, outdoor recreation area. What they want to do is to be able to restrict access into the property. And you see from your attached plat, that the current Georgia's Lane Road did ends into this property, so they're not able to put a gate at the beginning of their property to go to sell public roads. They would seek to have Pennsylvania County abandon that portion of road that doesn't serve any other properties. So outline your board packet, or all of the steps that are involved, how to shorten things to say that, you see under recommendation, if the Board of Supervisors determines that it is worthwhile to honor their deeds and abandon that property, as shown on the attached plat, then there needs to be a motion stating that the Board has determined that there's no public necessity for continuing the existence of that public road. And again, I point out, it doesn't serve any other properties this time. It's delineated on the attached plat, and you need to authorize posting and publishing of a notice to abandon, which will go through the Virginia Department of Transportation, and will also be posted on property and published in public newspapers. And as part of that is a willingness to hold a public hearing. If anybody sees that property posted, or they see it in the newspaper, they have objection, they can request a public hearing. So that would be the motion, if you want to take action, is, and shout on your board packet, authorize the County Administrator to forward that to the...
Mr. Warren?
This, too, is in my district, and I was contacted by Ms. West, who referred her to the staff, and they've been wonderful in working with her. Obviously, this, I've been out there, this, the part of the road they want is of no value or no benefits that we're gaining from it, but the wildlife and what they're gonna do there with the Recreation Department could be very beneficial to the citizens of Pennsylvania County and used for the tourism, Ms. Moran, so I'm gonna make the motion that we proceed with the process and do all of our due diligence that we must do before we can abandon the road.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Warren, and seconded by Mr. Barber. Any further discussion? Thirty-nine, nine, in favor, raise your right hand. Thirty-nine, all in favor, raise your right hand. And she has it. Thank you. And Mr. Sides? Item seventeen, road viewers' board. Mr. Warner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at your last meeting, you discussed the role of the road viewers. Ms. Flippin and Mr. Sides both have been working with B.D.I. to find out a little more about this. Mr. Crack with B.D.I., he provided an explanation, it's on page seventy-eight in your board packet, and there, he just responds that there is no legal requirement that a board supervisors has a road viewers. It says that it may establish one. We looked over a little bit of what is some of the last actions, when they may have met last, and we determined around two thousand seven, two thousand eight, somewhere in that time frame, they were active at that time, and made some recommendations to the board supervisors. And the question really remains of why have they been kept as a group? And what the staff offers for that is that we believe that the role was very fruitful in the past. In the past, there was a local B.D.I. office that was here in Pennsylvania County, they still very responsive to us, of course, but does that have a little bit to do with why they're not active? Like, I can't say that it does or does not. But what we do know is that our subdivision ordinances are maybe a little more defined at this particular time, and maybe some of the roads, we've gotten into the rule rustic program, that we may not have as much needs to involve the input of the road viewers. So, Mr. Chairman, we just offer that up to you, let you know those are some of the things that we found out and looked at about the road viewers, and it is your discretion, if you would like to reassemble them later, if a need arises, you could certainly eliminate that board in a good way and reestablish them later if the need arise. You could keep them on the roll as such, just knowing that they're not very active, but it would certainly be your pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blackstock?
I see this as another level of bureaucracy. That's just plain and simple, this is something that hasn't been used in eight or nine years. If we need it, we can call them back into action. I've had members of this committee ask me, why do the committees never meet? This is one of them that does that. I make a motion that the Pennsylvania County Road Viewers Committee be abolished.
Motion by Mr. Blackstock, and second by Mr. Skares. Any discussion? Mr. Warner?
I'm going to assume that we will send them a letter thanking them for their past service.
Absolutely, yes, sir. We would, if the board passes this motion as presented, we would write them a letter, thank them for their service, and explain why the board is taking this action.
I received a lot of thanking me for my service, and I know it showed up for me the eighth year, I didn't get a gap.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, the guy I had on there, the last guy, they went out and met, I think it was end of the week, and they made many recommendations, but B.D.I.'s responsible, they didn't have any money, so they didn't take them up on any of them at that time, so that's kind of where that went. Good ideas, but no money to go with it, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. And she has it, Mr. Williams. Thank you. Okay, did we hold on to anyone? Looks like you're going to material. That's a rare life. Board announcements, any sort of...
The only announcement I have, Mr. Chairman, is I think we should congratulate the Chatham High School girls' basketball team, they were the conference champs, and for the first time ever, they made it to the state tournament, so we want to congratulate those young ladies for a job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Skares?
Nothing at this time.
Come back. Mr. Blackstock?
I have nothing.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes, I do have a, I just want to talk for a second or two, or maybe a minute or two, here, Mr. Chairman. The, I'm way up on our agenda, the shore system. Actually, and it basically talks about FERC, and I'd love to talk about FERC because what has happened over the past years, I've been with T-LAC, it started on my fifth year, and FERC, FERC, over the past five years, and it's made a habit of being able, I mean, just like an iron fist over all the citizens on our lakes. It's Smith Mountain Lake, and also, uh, peaceful lake, and while I've got a chance to talk about it, I'm going to let that change, or I'm going to take that opportunity. So anyway, Mr. Hurt, Congressman Hurt, has assisted T-LAC and the citizens on Smith Mountain Lake and peaceful lake for all the years that he's been a congressman, and thank goodness, he has helped, and I hope this will continue to help FERC and the other air citizens, and not FERC, but other citizens, because they have been under this, under this federal system now for years and years and years, and hopefully, air citizens be able to play grass, work on our shoreline and so forth like that, and I would, I'm certainly going to do it my own self, but I would certainly would like to make a proposal that we can't have Congressman Hurt and ask him to, or at least thank him for this resolution he asked us to sign, or to give. This is going to be something that air citizens on the northern part of our lake, and actually, not just our lake here, it's a system that is nationwide, and they have done what they want to do with what FERC property, and you either get it their way or you get it no way, so that's my thoughts on that, and I'm certainly proud of Robert Hurt and for what he's done, and also, T-LAC, and thanks to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman.
Just to help Mr. Hagerman out, FERC stands for Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, that's what FERC is.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock.
And you're right, it is, it's a, it's general, so.
Mr. Barber?
Yeah, when Mr. Rowe was talking, something just popped in my head, he was talking about what attracted you to Pennsylvania County. My daughter got married this summer, and as a result, while he's twenty-three years old, and I've been dragging him out feeding cows and hunting and fishing, and one day we was riding that road, and he said, you know how I can hear about it where I grew up, and he's always been here, just a matter of months, and that was really encouraging me, somebody young, he sees the value of the quality of life around here, he loves it. That's what we did do with younger kids, get them here, and I think that's what we all appreciate about it, because in New Hampshire, or Pennsylvania County, I rarely ever leave it, I love it around here, and I think people realize what we, why we call it home, but that kind of goes in what you said, he's impressed already, or at least he tells me he is, oh.
He's trying to get the wheel.
Maybe that's what...
Thank you, Mr. Warner. I'm going to yield my little fifteen seconds to Mr. Monday, and I might have five seconds left after you get back there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Barstow and I had the pleasure today of going to a big birthday party, and yeah, they had some cake, and they had some nice things to say and so forth. Before we went to was the fiftieth anniversary celebration of the full pond day of Smith Mountain Lake. And I'll take you back in time a little bit, but that project started back in the sixties, took a couple of years once the dam was constructed for that thing to reach full pond. And we all know the value of Smith Mountain Lake to the quality of life not only in Pennsylvania County, but also to the region. They had a very nice program today, Congressman Hurd was there, Delegate Poindexter had permission to be absent from the General Assembly to present a House joint resolution to mark that occasion today, but what I wanted to show you is the historical sign. There are three of these, one for each county, including Bedford, Franklin, and also Pennsylvania County. There one for Bedford County, it is located at the Smith Mountain Lake State Park Education Center. Mr. Barstow and I got the hell of cut the ribbon on that and unveiled that sign earlier today. Our Pennsylvania County is at the Smith Mountain Dam. They wanted the markers commemorate the occasion to be located in the respective counties, and I'm ashamed to admit, I cannot remember where the one for Franklin County is, maybe Mr. Barstow does. But anyway, if you get a chance, if you're at the Smith Mountain Dam, please look for the Pennsylvania County sign, and we were able to present a resolution that you adopted on one of your recent consent agendas to Ms. Vicki Gardner, who is executive director of the Smith Mountain Lake Association, who helps market this event. So just wanted to let you know that event was very well attended, we had a lot of print media there, a lot of regional news media, and Pennsylvania County was well represented. And Mr. Barstow, I left out some things, I'm sure.
No, you've covered everything, Mr. Monday, thank you so much. And ladies and gentlemen, it was really exciting, lots of people, lots of class, but Pennsylvania County's marker is the envy of the Tri-Lakes, because it's right there at the dam, so it can't get any better than that. I'm talking about right there, so tell your relatives, friends, anyone, when they go there, you know, take the tribute, come to the tribute, stand at the dam by our marker, and every picture, take it and go on to five years of fame. But anyway, it was, it was really a great event, and it made, I think, both of us, me and Mr. Monday, very proud to be there, and just reflect that, well, you know, Mr. Hagerman, Mr. Blackstock, they represent the board, and so I thank you all, too. I've never been to one of those meetings, but I know you all are involved for the board, so on those nights when maybe I'm catching the news, you all are burning up the highway, are driving on the winding turns of Smith Mountain Lake, we appreciate that very much for what you do. Mr. Monday, did you have anything more?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Hunt. Okay. Okay, at this time, we're going to get ready to go into closed session. Mr. Hagerman?
The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors is considering entering closed sessions for two items. Both involve the discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested in locating its facilities in the community. The first matter is under two-point-two thirty-seven-eleven eight-five code of Virginia, known as Project Bell, for the discussion of potential economic development incentive package. The second is two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven eight-five, known as Project Nine Fifty, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested in locating its facilities in the community. And, Mr. Chairman, once we get a motion, a second, and a recorded vote, I would ask that we have not only myself and Mr. Hunt, but Mr. Rowe and Mr. Sides present for both of these matters, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monday. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors convene in closed session concerning a business prospect, or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry interested in locating its facilities in the community. Legal authority, two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one eight-five code of Virginia nineteen-fifty as amended, the subject matter is Project Bell. Subject matter number two is Project Nine Fifty, under the same legal authority.
Motion by Mr. Warren, second. The second by Mr. Barber, second.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Skares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Barstow?
Yes.
Okay, does the board have a motion to return to open session?
So move.
Second.
Motion, and a second, I'm going to go ahead and meet the statement. Being resolved that at the meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors on March seventh, two thousand sixteen, the board hereby certifies by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting, were heard discussed or considered in the closed meeting. If any member believes there was a departure from the requirements of the code, he shall so stay prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in a minutes under four. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Skares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Barstow?
Yes.
Motion, Tony?
Second.
Target?
Yeah.